Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and resume with our regularly scheduled meeting for 5:30. This is a continuation. We do have the presence of a quorum. All the board members are present. We have already done the pledge and the invocation. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and proceed. This regular meeting is resuming at 5:33 PM. Need a motion to call the meeting to order? Motion made by Mr. Starkey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Houston and all those in favor. They are. We are in a regularly scheduled meeting for 5:30 PM. We have already called for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, so we'll proceed to item three. Invitation to the audience for public comments, staff, board, public comments, suggestions, criticisms? Anything? No? Thank you. Like to move along to item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop meeting and the regular meeting for January 22nd, 2020. Got a motion made by Mr. Avalos? Seconded by Mr. Starkey. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving along to item five. General manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to mention that the Texas Water 2020 Conference is available for registration now. Let us know if anybody else wants to attend. I've got two of you. I think I at least had a spot or already in there. Okay, so we haven't gotten anybody else, so let us know. If you all want to get registered, we'll get you going on that one. And the sooner the better.
It has a deadline for registration.
Yes, there is a deadline. The deadline, March?
Ninth.
The ninth, yes. 2020, yes. So anyhow, that's.
Although you can always register on site.
Yes.
But it's more expensive.
It's more expensive.
Get a better reservation on the hotels and all that closer. Okay, our next agenda item is a letter from Port Isabelito Navigation District that they want the district to support in trying to, just written support, you know, nothing with finances or anything. But I will be producing a letter for them. I just wanted to bring it up to the board if they want to do another road back there because they have a lot of 18 runners that are going to be carrying, I guess, up to 150 trucks, truckloads per day. So they want to continue and get that road fixed from Port Road to Highway 48 and bypass this area because they'll be going through here on and off. So I'll produce that letter for them, a letter of support, and get that road going on the back. So Cameron County Regional Mobility Authority is the one that's responsible for that, so we'll get it going. Wanted to advise the board on that. And the next bullet that I have here is, I know I've been talking to our council here that we need like a workshop on open meetings and then director of responsibilities and duties. So we can cover and show all that information to the board. And I'd just like to have a date on it, see when everybody's going to be able.
Doesn't someone from the state come and do that?
They can. I think I could also do it, but it is statutory. Statutory that you're supposed to have it done within a certain.
I think the last time we had Mr. Lucio come in and give us open meetings or information.
How much time do we need? It's usually like 60 minutes, 90 minutes?
No.
Less, 30 minutes?
It's probably like a workshop, like we do now. An hour, I mean, not two hours. I'm not sure how long. I'd say about an hour.
Most of, I've been previously are about an hour. I personally am for 4:30 workshop.
4:30 workshop?
Longer if we need, just let us know if we need. But I like the workshops before the meeting personally.
I agree. I agree.
So can I?
Is our next meeting the 19th? No, I think it's the 20-something.
26.
26?
Regularly scheduled.
I mean, second and fourth.
But do we have a workshop that day?
Second and fourth. We jumped.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Do you all want to end that one? 4:30? 4:30 or 5:30?
What date? 26th?
I'll plan 4:30 if it's longer or we need more time for, just let us know in advance. I can coordinate my schedule. All coordinators scheduled.
So at that point?
That's better.
30 Saturday.
Yes.
And that's all I have for right now on my bullets, sir.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's move along to item six. Presentation on TCEQ authorizing superior designation in view of the high standard of water service made available to the residents of Laguna Madre waters given by grant access.
Good evening, board members. Thank you all for having us today. All Texas water supply systems are regulated by TCEQ, also known as the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for Minimum Standards. The Laguna Madre Water District go through this rigorous inspection every year. TCEQ recognizes overall excellence in operation of public water system by designating a system as superior if a system meets the stringent criteria set forth by them. In fact, in 2019, only approximately 10% of the community water systems in Texas achieved a superior rating, according to the state records. To earn this designation, a system must meet and maintain a high level of standards that are required of all public water systems. These standards include excellent efforts in water quality, treatment, protecting public's health, ensuring reliable operations, water supply for the system's customers, compliance with regulatory requirements, and environmental stewardship. The Laguna Madre Water District's standards were thoroughly inspected by TCEQ and were deemed superior. Please join me in congratulating the staff for their hard work and dedication in achieving this for the Laguna Madre Water District customers. Now, these signs will probably be displayed in all the communities that Laguna Madre Water District serves. Staff has already achieved the right-of-way permits. This was made by the staff and they did a great job, and so we will be posting them up proudly at each and every community that we serve. Do you all have any questions for me?
So we're in the top 10% or is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
That's what I heard, too.
Absolutely.
And this is a yearly?
Annual inspection.
Test.
Annual inspections of the water treatment plants and the groundwater?
This is for 2019?
2019, correct.
So when do we submit for 2020?
Well, they actually do the inspections annually, like in January, probably February of the year, and they'll give us a report on that. They already know that we're a superior public water system and they just additionally say, okay, you've acquired that superior rating another year, every year. And these signs will be posted in the incoming of the cities, like coming from Laguna Vista, it'll be on 510 and Highway 100, and then again on 48 going into Port Isabel here. And we'd like to have a next one. I think there's one that's missing that's going down to the island on the bridge somewhere in there, but we'll get that one going to.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to compliment the superior management and staff of Laguna Madre Water District on achieving superior success.
Absolutely. We're here.
And again, I want to thank the board members. When we had the election in 2011, that's what transpired after that. The microfiltration that was built at that time is the reason we have this superior. Thank you all, too.
Congratulations, everyone.
Moving along to item seven. Presentation of letter of recommendation from the bond committee to propose May 2nd, 2020 tax bond election. Bond planning committee report.
Yes, we do have the recommendation from our bond committee. We have our vice chairwoman, Nadine Smith, here. We're going to present that to the board of directors. I know Mr. Rudy Garcia is the chairman president and he's not here today, so we'll get with him and so he can sign that one tomorrow.
Thank you, sir. I'm Nadine Smith. I'm vice chair of the board. Good evening. And I'm hereby presenting the letter of recommendation from the bond committee to recommend or to propose the tax bond election of May the 2nd, 2020. And the letter is a summary of the whole project. I'm sure you guys have seen the videos, the PowerPoints, and our committee in conjunction with the staff of Laguna Madre and engineering firm Freeze &amp; Nichols have found several deficits of great concern, and we hereby recommend that the board approves the tax preparation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'd like to thank you personally for taking the time to be involved in the committee and serving and sharing your thoughts with the board and working with us. Thank you again. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item eight. Discuss and consider the approval of an engineer's report detailing the projects to be considered at the proposed May 2nd, 22nd, 2020 bond election.
All right. So yeah, including your bond packet is the summary report. It's final, signed and sealed, and then all the supplemental reports that provide the detail that were used put in that summary. So again, the cost and the report match the letter from the presented by the bond committee. Looking at Water Plant One being 22.39 million, the elevated storage tank improvement being 3.5 million, the water distribution being 3.7 million, for the total request being 27 million 620,000. So recommend approval of the report.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston. Seconded by Mr. Starkey. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Thank you. Motion passes. No issues. Thank you. Moving on to item nine. Discuss an improvement order calling a May 2nd, 2020 bond election for the Laguna Madre Water District and marketing provisions for conducting such election and other provisions incidental and related thereto with a board of directors roll call. Yes?
Chairman, if I can hand you a proposed motion that takes into account the figure that was discussed in the workshop?
Yes. I call a motion to approve an order calling a May 2nd, 2020 bond election for the Laguna Madre Water District in the amount of 27 million 620,000 dollars and approving other matters related thereto. A motion, I believe a motion should be made by all board members.
You don't have to roll call vote?
Roll call vote, correct. So roll call vote will start with board member Herb Houston?
Yes.
Yes? I need a second for the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Avalos approves. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Unopposed? Okay. Thank you. Roll call, Dr. Avalon?
Yes.
Motion yes. Need a second? Roll call for each board member?
Yes.
Okay.
You got two already, keep going.
Okay. I myself, Chairman Scott Friedman, vote yes.
Board member Jason Starkey vote yes.
And Alex Avalos says yes.
Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All board members are in favor of the roll call proposed for the election bond, May 2nd, 2020. Thank you. Does that conclude? Yes.
That's great.
Thank you. Moving along to item 10. Discussion on utility easements in South Padre Island. Thank you all for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for your time and efforts.
We'll take a minute on this one because Orlando, our IT guys wanted to look and take into where the video is at.
Right, go ahead and move to item 11.
Yes, please.
Let's go ahead and proceed with item 11. District engineers report.
All right, yeah, I mean, the main item I have here is just to Water Plant One, talking about that large clarifier and the addition of chlorine dioxide. I mean, again, you know, it's probably a little repetitive, but that large clarifier is at a point where it needs to be complete reconstruction, and so we're going to wait for the May 2nd election to determine how to proceed. And on May 3rd, you know, it's either going to be part of this $20 million project or we're going to have to rebuild, you know, without having that authorization through the public, so that's where our clarifier is sitting right now. With it offline, the plant's limited to 1 million gallons per day. And the other good part is the addition of chlorine dioxide, which will give us a stronger disinfectant here in Port Isabels. We got our TCEQ approval this week, and so we're working on plant review to get that chlorine dioxide in service by Memorial Lake. So we'll already have that stronger disinfectant working here at Water Plant One, and then as we get the additional improvements in place, you know, we'll just keep improving faster, you know, with the water. So that's where we're at.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I guess that concludes the engineer's report.
Thank you very much. Do we want to go ahead and move on to 12 or do we want to go back to 10?
10.
10? We're going back to item 10. Discussion on utility easements in South Padre Island.
Yes, and this one is, we have some information that we need to provide to the board members, and we've been talking to our council here that we need something done, whatever, whatever we need to do, but what happens is that the owner, property owners are taking over the easements in South Padre Island, and we're having issues. And you'll see some of the pictures here that you have a swimming pool in the backyard of one and a swimming pool in the backyard of another one, and the water line runs in the middle. If we ever have a break in there, how are we going to get to fix it? You know, like it's, South Padre Island has provided the permits for them to do that. I don't know what it is that they pay or how they acquire that, but we need to look into it and see what the board thinks about it and get our council to help us out.
I'd like to look at the easement things that we have on our easements.
Can you turn the light, please? Thank you.
I believe the easements are all platted, Mariah, and they're old plated easements. And they don't, they should have provided like an alley.
They don't have.
It's very, it's very mixed match. I mean, there's some places that have it and others don't. It's all over the place.
So what's going on with this?
What they, what they're supposed to have is when they, South Padre Island provided the easement map to us, it has to have like an eight-foot easement on one side and then the other eight on the other side. So there's 16-foot easement in there, and you can see the electrical poles are always right in the center. So you can see some of these that the poles are in the center, but there's concrete slab back to back in there, you know, where there's no way that the employees can go in there and check the water lines or fix the water lines. But what can happen is that if there is one at those areas, we're going to have to shut the water off first of all, and then how are we going to tackle the water leak and get it fixed is one of the things that is going to take a few days or however, whatever it's going to take to get back in there and repair them. Who knows, maybe a day or two or, and they're going to be without water.
Because a lot of those property owners think those, they've either got fences or landscaping and other things on them also, and they also think that that belongs to them.
If you can see the pictures in the back, I think they're better than that one, the ones on the TV over here. You can see that the easements are back to back right there. And see, I don't know if you can see the, like that one there has a swimming pool right behind that one. And there's two swimming pools right in the center where the electrical poles is at.
Is this the easement right here?
Yep, that's an easement.
But that's not the easement.
That's a swimming pool.
That's the easement.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's probably wide enough.
So here?
Yeah, but usually it's like.
Right down the east.
So there's still, I mean, there's still.
It's supposed to be like a driving easement where the utility trucks can go in there and fix.
You got to park the trucks and put the dirt. You usually have 30 feet, and then normally on an easement, you're not allowed to build on top of it, but with this, with all these pre-existing easements, and I mean, we're obviously probably not going to go in and tell everybody to tear up their swimming pools all across our easements just in case we have to fix them one day. But the day that you do have to fix them and you have to get under them, are you boring under them? Are you telling them to move their swimming pool or, you know, to deconstruct it to get to it? What do you do? That becomes the problem.
Well, South Padre Island issued a permit where they signed all the paperwork and it says that they're not responsible for any of the damages that the utilities will cause for them taking the easement.
Well, the expense and the time.
We can tear down, we can tear down the fences, the concrete slab and not repair them back, but the thing is.
That's usually what your easement says.
How do we get there? You know? It's hard to get in there. Be the back hole or.
Discrevator.
Right. Ingress and egress.
Right, so.
There should be side setbacks if you get back.
But there's not.
There's not alleys in every.
There should be, like Port Isabel has alleys, Laguna Heights, Laguna Vista has alleys, and they don't. It's one of those where it's sun.
Old looking has alleys, but not all, not all of them.
No, when we started doing the water lines in the front, that's when the alleys got done away with and the alleys actually.
Yeah, I understood. Yeah, everything's in the front.
We got the easements in the front in the street.
Yeah, pretty much like Padre Beach Estates, you know, was basically, used to be called the Tompkins Water System. They acquired it back in the early 1960s, and that's when we obtained the rights for ingress, egress, utility easements and all that sort of thing. So I mean, I don't have a flat off memory, like for how much is drawn up as an easement in the background, but it's.
There might be individual bases on everything.
Normally it's a 16-foot easement, eight and eight inside, but I know that AP has gone with us also, and they're like upset about it because they can't get in there and repair, make repairs on the electrical.
It's a problem for every utility.
Yeah.
Mimi?
I have something. I've been here for almost 19 years and.
You started here in middle school?
Excuse me?
Said you started here in middle school?
No.
Come over here, Mimi, in the front.
Anyway, what I'm trying to get across is that when we have to go and disconnect the water for customers, even if we go during the day or at nighttime, our crew has a hard time because they don't keep their alleys clean or even if they don't have an alley. So the guys can't go in through there. It's very dangerous here, and that's been ongoing for, I'm telling you, for 19 years since I've been here.
I remember when I was on the council there and we used to have a gentleman come up to every other meeting or so, he'd remind us that we need to take over the easement. That never happened, and that's why, and that's why that problem exists. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is it possible to, for us to get with their legal department and try to figure out how we can access? Obviously, it's going to have to be through the property owner, you know, where the problem is. We have, we're going to have to go to the front. There is no other way to get in in some areas.
That's right. A lot of times they have, those that do have gates, most of them have them locked, and a lot of those residents are out to work or they're not here.
Well, one of the things that I think could help is that I think there's better records of that because there's a lot of rental properties. So now there's updated records of the owners, contact information, things like that. So I'm wondering if we can try to address this problem by creating some kind of resolution with the city that addresses or gives us the ability to be able to call that person, get their information, you know, the necessary arrangements to get in through their property because that's going to be the only way in some place, in some cases, that you can do that.
Well, the island hasn't enforced the backyard setbacks like forever.
Well, and in all fairness.
And when a leak, and when a leak happens and they have to shut down the water to that old block, everybody's going to be super pissed off because some guy's got his apron of his swimming pool built over, and they're not going to care how you damage it, they just want the water.
Yeah, and in, and in all fairness, I think in some cases, and I've seen it happen many times, is that they present one set of plans to the building inspector, and then on the weekend is when they extend that extra 10 feet or whatever it is. It's happened so many times. I mean, I've seen it happen behind our house, you know, where on the weekend where there's no inspector around, that's when these things happen. Or they build onto, I mean, it's a problem. It's a problem everywhere. It's going to be a problem on Laguna when they build that because there's people that have permanent structure and parking on the easement. There was a problem on Gulf, it's going to be a problem on Laguna, it's going to continue to be a problem. I'm just wondering if there's something that we can add in writing, give us permission to be able to call, access, or contact that person of that property, what we need to get in through to be able to do that, to take care of the problem.
Problem is you're dealing with individuals with their own individual property rights, their own, each person will have their own view of what their individual property rights are.
Yeah.
And so it's almost like a case-by-case basis if you don't have a strong easement.
They don't. And they might not be that owner, but if we have something that we can contact the neighbor or the guy behind it or somebody, you know, instead of having to rely on the city to do that for us, now we're going to take more time, you know, so that's what I'm wondering, if we can develop some kind of contract or something, some agreement with them to be able to get that information from them.
Just what the phone numbers are or what you want, what information?
Contact information on the property owners around it.
Have that through their water meter.
Well, we have it through that, and there's also, because in some cases, I think we're going to want, we're going to have an issue that it's a rental property and they're never there, but.
But the owner's water meter is registered in this office.
I currently have a contractor on hold who's supposed to call me tomorrow because I told him to wait since we were going to discuss this, but he's already put the frame right on top of the easement, and he's getting ready to build a retaining wall. And I talked to him about that, that he needed to move it, and he said he couldn't because the city is forcing him to fill up that property and he needed to move that property line back over the easement.
But he's technically building over an easement that isn't his to be able to build over, right?
That's right.
Exactly.
Could file an injunction to stop it.
Well, do we want to do that on?
Right. I mean, because then you got, I mean, once you start that, you got to think, is this going to be equitable?
Sure.
Why are you going to, are we going to be picking on some people and not others who have all this? Because then neighbors start saying, well, look at what he's got.
Have we reached out?
But then this guy's building something new. If you can stop it before it happens.
Yeah, this construction is one thing, and what we're talking about existing stuff, my experience with the city inspector for the islands, he's super conservative and by the book, and you got to jump through an exorbitant hoods to build anything. And I think if, you know, we place the call in regards to that situation, you know, Mr. Gomis, you can probably resolve that by talking to Dave, but in regards to the pictures that we just solved and the problems that have existed for two decades, you know, I don't know what the law says about, I mean, to me, if there's an issue, you know, I'm calling the law, I'm cutting your lock, I'm going in your backyard with a police officer. We're going to start accessing our water line, and we're going to fix the problem, you know, and I think maybe to what Alex is, you know, discussing, we just need to get our proverbial ducks in a row, so when this happens, not if, you know, we're calling so-and-so police chief or whoever's on duty, and we're going to access our water. And if that goes at the cost of your pool apron or your retaining wall, then sorry about your lock. And moving forward, we need to have a, you know, I think, communication with the city, the FBI about, hey, as moving forward, we need to, we need to create a real accessible easement here. It's not just an easement you can't build on, it's something we got to be able to access. So for the lots that are yet to be developed, we got to consider that move forward, and maybe they need to look at how they plotted that, you know, so that there's an alley that wraps around that thing, but.
The builder's trying, it sounds to me, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
It sounds to me like the builder is jumping in because the lot is short, so they're jumping in on the easement because he's got a, either a low-lying area or water or something coming in. He's trying to build on that, and the builder is the one trying to do that, not the inspector or he's the one trying to access the easement or get as much property as he can out of it because it sounds like it's, the lot may have some issues with it.
Well, I asked him how he could do that because looking at a picture that I took,
or he's the one trying to access the easement or get as much property as he can out of it because it sounds like it's, the lot may have issues with it.
Well, I asked him how he could do that because looking at a picture that I took, there's already some property around him and he wants to build that property up three feet. I said, how can you do that with all the other property that's going to be below those three feet?
That's right. I mean, you want to raise it. You want to put retaining walls around it. You don't, you don't want to be low in the aisle. I mean, I can appreciate that. And in his mind, he might just think that just dirt that he's putting there, the retaining wall might not actually be on the easement, it's probably right on the lot line. You can still access, you just got to dig additional three foot, but it's still, how do we access it issue? Like, how do we get trucks back there? How do we get equipment back there when needed to? How have we been doing it to access? Like when we have a leak on something, has it occurred where we've had a leak under somebody, on an easement, under somebody's property, under somebody's wall or pool?
I know that they haven't had that many there, but it will happen sooner or later.
Why don't we just have Carlos discuss with the city manager on current issue that you're pending and future going forward and then take it from there.
Yeah, there needs to be some discussion of how you access or how you handle those situations. Worst-case scenario I've heard is I had a gentleman, a tech guy from ABNT, come to my office and he was in shock because he was met with a shotgun and was told to leave the property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Different parts of the property rights. We need to be proactive and have conversation with the chief of police for the island about when this happens, what is our protocol? We need to get that right and we need to look at easement law. I mean, we went to easement law, Tim Norr at the conference.
City manager is the ex-police chief, but I think he can, he's the ex-police chief, so he can help you with all of that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Because I don't want any Laguna Madre Water District fully knocking on any random gate where there could be a dog or someone with a gun or any of that stuff. If it's, if it's, you know, if it's not in an alley that we can access it easily, there needs to be protocol. And all new easements... Just then, free service communicated and ready to roll. And all new easements going forward should have ingress, egress, be recorded separately from the plat.
Get with the, Carlos, get with Randy Smith, and from there, you could, the three could call a meeting with the building inspector and from there start to resolve going forward and how to deal with the previous, but we're just burning.
I'll have Brian back me up.
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes. I'll be happy to go to the meeting with you.
Need to remember that they used to read those meters manually.
Yep.
So, routinely, they would pop the fence and get over to read the meters. The city has allowed, whether you are building a fence or retaining wall, you can come in with a permit and you can build over it. And you're always told that, you know, if it has to be destroyed to get in it, it has to be destroyed. So, the city has allowed it. So, the city needs to take the lumps when we have to go in and tear up somebody's backyard.
I agree.
Most of those lots, if not all of them, back up, back to back, share a common property line. And like Carlos said, there's like a 15-foot easement with eight on one side and eight on the, 16. And we were supposed to have left an alley, but that idea went away 30 years ago.
Well, how, how much elevation is required?
Well, most of those lots for flood elevation are having to be elevated, you know, two to three feet.
So, the pretty much they all got to get a retaining wall on the line on the top part.
On new construction going forward, yes.
Same as just back then.
Okay, let's move along. This conversation could go on. We are at item 12, is that correct? Item 12, consider and remove from the table the following item table at the regular meeting on January 22nd, 2020. Consider and discuss for possible approval of replat of Lot 2 Roal Flora subdivision including the relocation of utility easement in existing water line, gravity sewer and force main.
Motion made. Take it off the table?
Motion made to take it off the table by Dr. Alon, seconded by Mr. Starkey. For all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Motion is off the table. Moving on to item 13, consider and discuss for possible approval of replat of Lot 2 Roal Flora subdivision including the relocation of utility easement and existing water line, gravity sewer and force main.
All right, yeah, so this is a proposed...
Wait, wait, Scott.
Yes?
You need to recuse yourself.
I recuse myself from this item.
You can, you can...
Abstain vote?
Abstain, yeah. You can sit, you can, just don't discuss and don't vote.
Okay.
And you're fine.
All right, so, yes, so this is a proposed replat of Lot 2 Roal Flora subdivision and on this exhibit, Lot 2 is an L shape. It comes off of Highway 100 between the Treasure Island and the old car wash and then wraps around and covers all the back adjacent to the old Water Burger. And so, so basically, in this replat, the Water Burger lot, which is Las Palmas subdivision, is going to get combined with this, with this underprooked area behind Stripes and the Car Wash into one lot. And then, the remainder of Lot 2 that's wedged between the Car Wash and Treasure Island up to Highway 100, that's going to become its own separate lot in the replat. And so, to get that lot created, they need to get utilities service out to that site. And so, we're proposing a 20-foot easement along the north side to get a water extension